Monday, February the 10th, 2025, to this Committee of Whole Meeting. And I'm councillor Don Quinn. And on February the 10th, 2025, we acknowledge that this sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been the site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and onceded territory of the Algonquin Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and the water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations. Together may we care for this land and each other, drawing on our strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. I'll call this meeting to order at 5:02 PM. And I would like an approval of the amended agenda, Priority Issue 9.2. Councillor McKenna is going to chair that portion for me. That February 10th Committee of Whole Meeting amended agenda be approved as circulated. All in favour? Thank you. Do we have disclosure of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest in general there? Thank you. Approval recommended motion that the minutes of the January 27, 2025 Committee of Whole Meeting be approved as circulated. All in favour? Thank you. This evening, we do not have any delegations. Do we have any CEO or directors' reports?
Madam Chair, we have two brief reports, starting with Director Clark.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update to advise that we intended to host our lower-reach redesign open house last week, but due to... People kept saying unprecedented snow. It was quite a lot of snow, but it was precedented rather than unprecedented. We did make a decision to bump it to Thursday of this week. So 5:30 PM, you're all invited, as well as the public, 5:30 to 8 at the community centre. And our presentation... There will be a presentation on the designs that have been drafted to date. And it's still no decision-making, nothing final, still open for public input. And we're hoping that as many people will come out as possible, yourselves included. That's it.
Any questions? Thank you for that.
Yes, just a brief one for myself, and it's an extension of the discussion we had last week about the procurement policies and the tariff threat that seems to be dominating the news these days. So just a quick update that both the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and AMO in Ontario are working and looking at this matter. And so there are a number of initiatives going on, but the one I want to share with you is they're looking at mechanisms to move forward with the Buy Canadian or Buy Canada strategy that the federal government will be supporting. So we're looking... AMO is looking at tools to enable that to happen. The FCM are looking at the legal dimensions of making that happen. So we're going to be closely plugged into those discussions. We do have an initial legal opinion on buying local and excluding products from certain countries, which gets a bit complicated. So we're going to wait for more universal generic advice coming out of these two industry associations, and then we'll bring something back to this table for discussion.
Any questions? That's great. Thank you very much. Moving on, Committee of Whole Consent Reports, which we have none, so we'll move right on into Priority Issues, 9.1, which is Affordable and Inclusive Housing Plan Report. And that's with Manager Crinkie, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, committee. I'm happy to present for council's information and endorsement the Affordable and Inclusive Housing Action Plan. So as part of the official plan project, certainly, we're looking at a policy-based approach to guide the town's growth and development over the next 25 years. And it's normal through an official plan project where we identify certainly a few areas that need some additional attention. And that's often done through companion reports. We've already done a land need study, for example. We're working on a transportation master plan. But one important issue, and certainly it's number two or the second priority item on the council strategic plan, is housing. And councils identified the need for a housing needs analysis and plan through our strategic plan, and also to sort of dovetail with the work that we're doing on the official plan. So part of one of the deliverables through the official plan project is the housing needs analysis and a housing plan. It's important to me that this plan also looks beyond simply planning policy. It's important that we include planning policy, making sure that the official plan creates housing supportive policies to sort of facilitate and enable development. But it shouldn't just stop there. It needs to look broadly at the whole range of actions and operations that can happen within the municipal sector. Certainly, housing is very important. Our role as a municipality is we don't control the supply chain, we don't control labour, we don't control a lot of cost elements, but there's a number of things that we do control and that we can help. And the Housing Action Plan was one piece that identifies a few things that we can do to do that. So we'll support the official plan, the plan if endorsed by council. We'll also give staff in a couple of departments sort of a broader list of things, processes, enhancements that we ourselves can do. And certainly, I've had that conversation with my colleagues in Development Services as well. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rory Bach and Amy Greenberg from Dillon Consulting. They're going to review the Affordable and Inclusive Housing Plan and some other recommendations that they've presented for our consideration. So I'll just... I think, Carrie, we have it teed up?
Amy's running the presentation, yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and please proceed.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to thank Rory. He is actually controlling the slides for me to... First and foremost, hello. Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Amy Greenberg, and Rory and I have been working very closely with Carl and Mary on coming up with a strategy to best position the town to address the range of housing needs that you have. So with that, if you don't mind just going to the next slide, I'm a bit mindful of our time, so I'd like to give a brief overview of how we got to today, but I would like to spend most of my time on the strategy itself. So with that, go to the next slide. So just a quick little introduction, there was a need for housing needs. So as part of the mandate for the Housing Task Force in 2020, they came up with a list of recommendations, and they worked through several of them, but it was built on 2016 census data. And since then, of course, there's been a new census. So with that and with the land need study, identifying land needs around housing, around growth, really, that led to this need to kind of update this housing strategy and come up with a new plan to ensure that the pathway is still as efficient and effective as possible. So of course, the objectives were to look at the census data, to identify any possible gaps in housing tenure, housing affordability, housing types, and essentially build that to figure out what strategies can be imposed to address these gaps that are tailored to the specific demographics for the town. So with that, we came up with the Affordable and Inclusive Housing Plan, the components of which are the housing needs analysis that I've just referenced, which again identified the housing needs and gaps across the housing spectrum, so not just for market housing, but also for non-market housing. And then based on that analysis, we're coming up with some opportunities in terms of a strategic action plan for affordable and inclusive housing. So with that, if you don't mind going to the next slide. So just that brief project overview. So we conducted the housing needs analysis. I looked at the 2021 census data. I reviewed the old plan, just again to see what has been done already, how we can reposition our efforts and build on the momentum that you already have. So our key focus area is we looked at the current and future housing demands. We also wanted to make sure that these solutions were inclusive and sustainable. So in terms of the Housing Accelerator Fund, a big objective, of course, is to build more housing. But we know that there are actions that need to be taken for that to happen quickly. There are also actions that need to be taken to ensure that it's happening sustainably and is viable over the long term. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we reviewed the 2021 census data. I also looked at the municipal documents that are already in place, the official plan 2034, for example, the zoning bylaw. We looked at the Housing Task Force report. We looked at the Community Improvement Plan. We also looked at any mismatches in housing supply and demand based on all of that information. Next slide. So for key findings, we found that there was a higher proportion of smaller houses versus the available larger units. This seems to be a trend that we are seeing across the board. There are a lot of single detached homes, but that's not necessarily aligning with the numbers in terms of how the household compositions are appearing to be. There are lots of lower-income households who are facing affordability challenges. This is also seen across the province. And then there is also a high reliance on rental. So there's a clear need for more affordable rental options. So as part of the housing needs analysis, we also did a bit of a best practices review just to see what other municipalities in the area are doing in terms of addressing their housing needs, what incentives or other programs that they may have in place. And with that, that kind of built out what opportunities that Smiths Falls had that we know others are doing as well. Next slide. So with that, come the gaps and opportunities for affordable and inclusive housing. So first and foremost, we found eight. But I think, just building on what Carl had said, there's an importance of having a policy framework that's adaptive. When I looked at the official plan, it already has a lot of good stuff in there, but I think with that comes even more opportunities to make sure it's as effective and streamlined as it can be. There are also opportunities to evaluate whether there are any policy barriers. And so with that, next step might be things like restrictions around zoning, like minimum distance requirements for things like rooming houses. We revisited the task force recommendations. I said earlier that very much, a lot of headway has been made. I think there was only one left in terms of making a developer guide, and you'll see that in this plan. There's an opportunity to streamline development approvals. With that, there's all... Again, there are already many things that are already in place, but I think it's more of the sense that it always needs to be top of mind. Going through an approvals process isn't always easy for every person. Some developer might go through it through a breeze, but there are others who might be new to the game and would like to get into affordable housing development and can't go through it as easily. There are like streamlining approvals comes in many different shapes and forms. Another opportunity is to invest in infrastructure. Again, that might be making sure that the municipal servicing infrastructure is in place to accommodate the growth and even parkland. So with that, I'd like to go to the next slide, going into the Affordable and Inclusive Housing Plan itself. So we came up with 15 actions, six of which were quote-unquote "strategic," which meant they solved multiple housing challenges simultaneously, but really, they were also the key to unlocking the other actions, the supplementary actions. All of this to say, all 15 actions are important. There are some that we recommend that you implement within the next two years, or really as soon as possible to, again, to position yourself in a way that you can easily roll out this plan and start to address housing needs, the current ones, the future ones, the ones as they evolve. Would you please go to the next slide? So before I dive into this, I don't want to read these slides, per se. I do know that they should be in your staff report, so they should be in front of you anyway, but I'd like to give just an overall sense of what they are each trying to achieve. So for this first one, strengthen the role of the planning department in supporting housing development. Really, it's a capacity building exercise, just to ensure that the current staff have the capacity, the resourcing, to really handle these housing initiatives. It may be the case that they do. It may be a matter of evaluating whether you might need a dedicated housing coordinator or even whether you need to reestablish the housing advisory committee. So essentially, it's making sure that you understand what needs to be done, who may be able to do it, and if they cannot do it, how you redistribute the resourcing accordingly. So this would be evaluating roles and responsibilities, again, figuring out if you might need a housing coordinator, and reinforcing the need for clear and consistent communication across departments. And I'm sure that is already there, but again, it's just making sure that there's frequent communication as things evolve quickly and people act fast. And another piece of this... Oh, sorry. Last thing. Another piece of this is key performance indicators, which I will get to towards the end, but really is finding ways to measure progress. Next slide, please. So the second one is really about creating more diverse and adaptable housing landscape, so balancing community character with increasing density where appropriate, providing residents with a variety of housing options that meet their unique needs, as well as improving access to green space in a way that is balanced with this housing supply. Next slide. So this one is about making it easier for developers to create affordable housing, so non-market housing, by identifying whether there are any policy barriers and removing them, by offering... Continuing to offer financial incentives or leveraging existing funding that is external to the town, and as well as working closely and partnering with other key housing actors to meet the town's affordability goals. Next slide. This one is, again, about assessing whether a dedicated committee is needed, again, to drive these new housing initiatives, and just making sure that the town continues to remain aligned and effectively managed when they are tackling these housing needs. To a degree, this actually ties with that first strategic action, as I said, which is evaluating the capacity of the planning department and just determining whether you need that extra level of support to keep things moving forward. Next slide. This one is about providing developers with clear guidance and support to navigate the housing development process, really ultimately facilitating more efficient and successful projects to be developed in the town. And again, as I said earlier, this isn't to say that there isn't already clear guidance being provided, it's just reinforcing that this is something that we hear across other municipalities or from other developers, that they don't necessarily have the smoothest experience. They might be faced with little administrative barriers that really like kind of slow down the process. But all this to say is just making sure that where and when those efficiencies can be sought, that they should. So this would be developing a user-friendly guide, so detailing the processes, requirements, and incentives for housing development. And this may also be tied to workshops or symposiums for developers to teach them more about what they could do in the town. There was another little piece to this in terms of developing pre-approved housing models, and this in terms of pre-approved is in collaboration with the building division, essentially saying, when it comes to the building permit approval process, it's a quick and easy checkmark for them because they've already reviewed it in advance. And with this, there's a chance to be able to adapt it to other subdivisions, just again, an opportunity to streamline and expedite the process. Next slide. The last strategic action is about collaborating with nonprofits to expand housing options for vulnerable groups, including housing options that are accessible, energy-efficient, and well-integrated into the community. Biggest thing for this one is knowing that these nonprofit organizations in our county, they have boots on the ground, and they understand what's happening in real time, where if you're relying on the census, let's say that's only updated every five years, there's a need to maintain strong relationships with these people who have boots on the ground, who know exactly what's going on, so that you can continue to tailor and adapt your strategy as time goes on. So, next slide, please. I'm mindful of the time, so I'm going to try and be quick. So we had nine supplementary actions. Again, they're not strategic, per se, but they do play an important part in addressing housing needs. And they reinforce the focus of this strategy on capacity building, including optimizing existing town resources, collaborating with housing actors across the spectrum to build on their knowledge and experience, recognizing that addressing housing needs is an all-hands-on-deck endeavour. It really isn't a one-person job. Ensuring that your policies and processes are streamlined and as effective as possible. So this may be ensuring that CIP is doing what it's supposed to be doing. This may be implementing a community planning permit system. And then lastly, taking an information sharing approach to help address housing needs. I think a big challenge with housing is the fear of the unknown, and also just not necessarily knowing that there are many benefits that come with things like increased housing diversity, increased density, community, and whatnot. And then, yeah. So those are the nine supplementary actions. Next slide, please. So as I said earlier, in terms of monitoring plan, there is a benefit to having clear, defined performance indicators that you can measure as you go, really to get a sense of how you're doing, whether or not you need to reprioritize, how you may need to rearrange resources. It may, again, tie to that strategic action one to see, do we have adequate support in the current planning department to roll these out, or do we need help? And again, as I said, this is an all-hands-on-deck approach. This is not something that anybody can do alone. And as I'm learning more and more, everybody has a role to play, and everybody should come to the table and work together to play said role. So that's all I've got. Thank you. Apologies if I seemed a bit rushed in there, but there was a lot to cover. But I will open the floor to any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments? Councillor Miller.
Thank you so much for the report and the recommendations. I think it's really specific, and I like what I see. I have a couple of questions, Madam Chair. The first one is, can you tell me what the difference is between affordable housing and attainable housing?
Anyone?
Good afternoon to council and through the chair. I'm happy to answer that one. I'm happy to do it. So for the longest time, we use the word affordable interchangeably, and we used to say small a affordable, meaning generally, the applicant individual can afford the place that they're in. And then we used to say, back in the day, capital A affordable, which was non-market housing, rent gear-to-income, social housing, public housing. What we've developed in recent times is a slightly different nomenclature to make it easier for basically everybody to understand what we're talking about. So now, these days, when we speak about affordable housing, most of the time, we're speaking about those non-market housing products, rent gear-to-housing, public housing, social housing, and the like, subsidized housing. And when we say attainable housing, we're speaking about the regular market housing for those folks that have the available disposable income to either pay rent or carry a mortgage, that they have a housing product that allows them to do that with the resources they have. And that's considered the attainable side of housing. And that attainable house could be a family whose average income is $120,000 a year, and they're able to afford the rent for an apartment. Or attainable housing could also mean the family that has an income of $2.2 million, and they happen to be able to carry a mortgage for a mansion. So attainable kind of has a very, very broad look at the market. It's attainable based on your income level. So hopefully, that offered a good answer to the question of how we've moved the nomenclature from the old use of affordable to the new use of affordable and attainable.
...in the best practices, have public transportation, and of course, we don't. So I'm wondering about, are we concerned about further parking spot reductions as we go forward and plan when most people in our rural settings have to have a car?
So I think through you, Madam Chair, I think it's... Certainly, any of these recommendations would need to be scalable to the situation that applies in the town of Smith Falls. And I think parking is one of the biggest, I guess, impediments that I've experienced here in terms of the density of housing. There's lots of development proposals I've seen where they would have liked to have gone to a higher number of units, but they're looking at sort of working out those parking requirements. And we've considered reductions here and there, if it makes sense, if it's close to, if it's more walkable to other amenities. But I think in the broader... In the bigger picture, I think we'd have to... We would have to look at that and scale it to our situation. We recognize that for a large part, there's still going to be, unless something changes, we expect that there will be a need for parking spaces for a good portion of... For a good portion of tenants. I think the important thing in creating affordable as well as inclusive housing is that people aren't landlocked where they are. So I'm not sure what that's ultimately going to look like in the future, certainly as we move through the official plan process, and then sort of in those next steps in zoning, we're going to have to try to find that right balance. I'm certainly not interested in requiring the creation of hardened surfaces that don't get used, but then also managing the impact on our streets and making sure that we're not burdening snow removal in the winter and so on, and trying to find that right balance. I think every community's in that boat, trying to find that right balance.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks a lot. It's great to read the report and having it as our strategic priority, it's really exciting to have this come forward tonight. I'm wondering... Excuse me. In the theme of the parking and the mandatory minimum setbacks, that seems to be the thing that usually adds the time and cost when it comes to development approvals for adding an additional residential unit. So I'm wondering, how will the recommendations tonight improve that process or streamline that process or reduce the cost and the burden on the person trying to add the unit in that process to make it easier?
I'm pleased to answer that question. This very important piece of work also points forward to what's the ongoing official plan update process. Though in all of the things that are in this particular Housing Action Plan, myself and the other members of the Dillon team helping to update the official plan will be through those cues and establishing in policy the guidance necessary in order to facilitate alternative forms of residential or alternate dwelling units and ease that. By setting it out first in the official plan and policy, it then makes it a lot smoother for someone to go through the process of their approval. So the two are very closely intertwined, and I'm glad that the two exercises are actually happening.
And just a follow-up to that, I'm hoping as we go through the official plan updates, there's on the older side of town, we've got a lot of properties that traditionally would have had carriage houses in the back, and as the need for that's gone away, they've come down. But new mandatory minimum setbacks have come in since the properties were originally developed, that would never allow those carriage houses to exist now. So when people try to build a backyard unit, or if there's some kind of increased density, now they're coming up against those mandatory minimum setbacks. So I'm hoping we can have some kind of reconciliation between the lots that are grandfathered in to have that density and places that may want to go back to the original density of the lot as it was developed, when the property first came into existence, so that we don't put people through all the hoops that they need to jump through if they want to add an additional residential unit to a density that would have originally been there when the property was developed. But thanks for the report tonight. I think it's a good step forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think even though we've had a lot of housing development in recent years, I think probably over 100 units a year for the last six, seven years, which is really encouraging and probably aligned even greater number than what we need, what's projected of the new OP, I think it's important that we take a look and say, how do we ensure that momentum continues? And what we're seeing here is a great chance to look back at where we've come, where we've been, where we are, and where we need to go. So very supportive of a lot of the initiatives in here. I guess a question really would be, is there an opportunity or a need for an overarching vision statement? Because I think it's speaking to what we're trying to accomplish through these amendments to our official plan, and try to ensure that we have obviously this embedded within it, and ensuring not just that we have the housing development, but the affordable side of it. Because of the roughly 700 units that were given... Because of the roughly 700 units that were directed over the last six years or so, as we all, we all recognize that probably a little bit less than 10% of those may be considered affordable or deeply affordable. And we're an environment where housing, cost of housing has risen in every instance for people who are on fixed incomes or more marginal incomes. And the average rent in Smith Falls now would be probably not affordable to probably half our population if they had to move where they are today. So I think it's important that that emphasis be here. But I'd like to see, I guess, a vision statement which speaks to what we're trying to accomplish here overall. Are we looking simply primarily for volume and ensuring that we have an adequate housing supply? Or is there going to be a larger emphasis on, on the affordability side? And it's a lot of, I'd say a lot of positives in recent years, but how do we ensure that that continues? And ultimately, how do we ensure that our citizens all have a home they can afford? Because we know that, and I'll speak to the Smith Falls for all committee, which is set four pillars. As prior as housing being one, two others being poverty and housing and food insecurity. And of course, all those three are very much interconnected. And we know that people who are paying greater than 30, 40, 50% of their income in housing are food insecure. And as a result of that, the long-term impacts, their health, quality of life certainly is diminished. So I guess going back to the question, it's a vision statement and, and do we prioritize these within the plan?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you for, thank you for the questions. That, that actually leads us to sort of the next, the, the next deliverable in our official plan process. And that's probably in, probably the first or second committee meeting in, in March. We're actually going to be coming back with a series of vision statements and strategic directions on each of the five key themes that we've identified through our OP process. One of those, of course, is, is housing. So through the, the public engagement we've done, through the, through the, the staff workshop, we've been working closely with Dylan as well as our other colleagues in, in defining, defining proposed visions for each of those. And, and we'd like to certainly have those validated with council to make sure that we're all on the right track before, before the pen is to paper and we have an official plan to look at. We want to make sure that we have the, the right idea on the, sort of the big, on the big ticket items. So our expectation is we will be coming back in, in March with a proposed vision for how we want to address housing as well as the, the four other key themes. And I'll, I'll look to Rory if you wanted to, to supplement that.
I actually couldn't have said it any better. Yes, please. We look forward to seeing the vision and strategic directions. We think it'll bring a lot of excitement to the official plan moving forward and set a very valuable foundation in place for the future of the community. So definitely looking forward to that presentation in March.
One follow up question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. And it's for to Carl. We discussed a secondary plan for the town that lands on Ferrara. Is that underway and, and looking at possibilities and probabilities or what, what council could consider for that area?
Yes, that will, through, through you, Madam Chair, that is one of the opportunity areas that we're working on through this, this process. We'll be coming forward with a, with some recommendations and concepts for how we want to manage development in that area as well as our other opportunity areas.
All right. So thank you. And then just to give for the public who may be listening, that's an area of land that we own. So when it comes to, we talk with some of the priorities here, we have an opportunity to completely influence what happens with that parcel of land. And whether that is affordable homeownership, more affordable rents or a combination of both, we'll really much, very much look forward to that coming forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor McKenna.
Oh, Counselor Brennan decided to stand up for a while.
Counselor Brennan.
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. And I read the report with interest. And some of the things that stood out for me in the OP update that you gave in the first part of the present, for the report, that were kind of surprising to me were household size in Smith Falls, 73% of the households have two or less people. The income gap I was aware of compared to Larnark County and also the owner and renter percentage, so it was 54, 45. So there's almost even for, for rental. So obviously, the, the need for affordable rents is apparent, which we have known. A couple of questions though. So you mentioned a dedicated housing coordinator and you mentioned other municipalities, what they've done, what works. Is that one of the things that they do?
The dedicated housing coordinator is, is, was something that Carl had mentioned, but in terms of having someone dedicated to implement housing initiatives, yes. I know, I actually know someone personally who works at the town of Milton. But there are also things like concierge programs, which is in this plan, similar thing where you have someone who is with you from start to finish, can help you answer questions, essentially guiding you through the process. So little, different little ways of, of assisting those more hands on.
Okay, thanks. And I, I, you know, as a member of the planning committee, I think that the staff do a freaking good job, especially with small developers and, and that sort of thing. And we have had a number of cases where we're getting intensification. I think we've got a meeting on Thursday and we're going to talk about another property. So that's great. And the other one, another question I had, if you don't mind, through the chair. So you mentioned at the start, there's two or three things we need to do sort of in the near term. What are those?
The two to three things? I, I, I'm not too sure what you are referring to, but in terms of, of priority recommendations, it's those first three, first six, sorry, strategic actions. And, and it's recommended that they're implemented within a two-year timeframe.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Carl, did you have something you wanted to?
Yes, to, to follow up on Counselor Brennan's comment or question with respect to the housing coordinators. Certainly I, there's different municipalities have different ways of sort of managing that service, but I think that recognizes that, that our, our responsibility is, is more than simply shepherding a planning act application from start to, start to finish. There's programs available at, at the county and oftentimes the county will, we're basically trying to build capacity within our, our administration. So not necessarily the addition of a new staff, but sort of creating roles within existing, identifying roles within sort of existing job descriptions for somebody to liaise with the county on, on their programs or kind of link, link applicants for, link applicants with the county or potentially if there's other, other grants available. And as I think it was, was mentioned earlier, we've, we shepherd a lot of applications through the process where there's a variety of experience on that. Of certainly a more experienced developer may sort of be more familiar with the expectations, the requirements and, and need a little bit less help, I think navigating the process. A less experienced developer, I think our job is, is making sure throughout the process that they know what's expected of them and what's, what's, what's required. And if the ball's in our court, that it's in our court for as, as short a period as, as possible. But I think just sort of examining those roles within our own operations to make sure that, that expectations are, are clear and defined. So to minimize sort of those, those, sometimes those gaps in the process. If, if somebody's looking for, if somebody's looking for direction on, on something. But I think with respect to the, the housing coordinator role sort of within an existing, within an existing job description is just sort of identifying that as, as, as a key part of, a key part of, of what we do and, and having that, that person be a bit of a liaison between ourselves, our administration and other levels of government who, who manage housing. It's certainly trying to avoid the, avoid the silos that, that often exist when we're in the, in the development world.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just to comment on the, a little bit on the methodology, it's obvious reasons why we would compare data with Larnark County. There are housing providers in many instances of rent geared to income. They have the provincial mandate and the budget to deliver a lot of social housing in our community and others. But is there other benefits to comparing to Larnark County, just population growth? And if, if there is, what, why are we not also looking to our other immediate neighbors in Leeds Granville and looking at their data? Why did we, apart from the obvious reasons to look at Larnark, are there other benefits just looking at Larnark that we couldn't have included parts of Leeds Granville? Would that have helped add any information to our, to our study?
Maybe I'll offer some thoughts on that and a few minutes left to color around this as the key analyst. When we do a housing needs assessment, it's looked at from a community perspective with a perspective also around what's called the regional market area. And so when this work has been done throughout successive years in the past, the regional market area is typically the, the geography surrounding it. In some cases, it might be the regional municipality in other parts of Ontario. And in this context, it's considered the county. So that was where the comparison had been drawn is because of customary approach that started used when looking at present use assessment. The other thing is, as we got into the work, we found that Smith Falls is really one of a kind. Like you're, you're very unique in terms of where you are geographically speaking, the composition of your households, some of the housing challenges. And so, you know, looking at that kind of Larnark just provided an opportunity to kind of see around Smith Falls. But at the end of the day, because of the uniqueness of the community, what really needs to happen is action focused on supporting the community going forward, supporting Smith Falls going forward. Amy, did you have anything else to add in regards to some of the background analysis?
Not really. I think you said it pretty well. I guess what I think of when I hear that question is there, there is benefit to knowing what else is going on in the surrounding areas for sure. And theoretically, that could have been tied to the best practices review. But I, no matter what, at the end of the day, the, the housing strategy is tailored to the community and the community's data is the most telling of that story. I'm just, just in terms of my experience, there, like there might be benefits to maybe doing a scan of, of newspaper articles of what's going on in the surrounding areas to get some anecdotes, to, to do a bit of a qualitative painting on what else is happening in terms of local housing needs. Really, every community is same thing, but different. Seems as though that a lot of the housing needs are consistent, especially in Ontario, likely geographically as well. But at the end of the day, it does differ from, from municipality to municipality. So.
That's great. Thank you. If I could follow up another one, just is the, the, the recommendations regarding, I know it's a prerequisite to our official plan, so we wanted to do this and it was a good update on our housing environment. I was hoping beyond hope that there'd be some wonderful surprises that would, you know, pave the way forward quite easily, but they're the same important initiatives that we have, we were aware of. You're reinforcing the value of them. They're broad in number. So like, they're all there. There was, there's no, so that's really our path forward. Our, and then just to comment on the, our not profit service providers or our social housing builders, we have, as you know, we have very, very few. And we already have excellent working relationships with them. They are so small out here that if they're involved in another community like they are, they're building in Perth, they can't get to us for probably two or three years. These are such complex initiatives. We don't have enough of them, so we're really reliant on, on very few of them. And my final is, I'm not a, I don't think I want to see another housing committee. I, I think that it would add, I don't see it adding the value. We know what we need to do. It's laid out pretty straightforward. You're reinforced what the previous housing task force already said. If anything, perhaps a committee oversee the official plan to ensure, as the mayor pointed out, that this vision is tied to everything in the official plan. It's so important that, so that would be the, the only thought. And it, for me, it's all about, we shouldn't try this alone. It's all about partnering with Larnark County, who are the housing providers? And so, but it's good. I'm glad we did it and we can move on to the official plan.
Yeah, just as a comment to your first question, Counselor McKenna, because I think comparing Smith Falls to other municipalities in Larnark County, compare small urban to largely rural. And, and we know in rural areas, it's, and many of them, I think, maybe not, if not all of them, is over 90% homeownership compared to almost 50, 50 split ownership and, and rental here. Incomes are higher than rural areas and, and again, those who have older homes tend to have a higher income to be able to afford those homes. So I think comparison to small urban, whether that be Perth and Carlton Place, but also Brockville, Gatineau Way, Prescott is an example, Armheart, whatever, Renford, would probably is a better comparator. But I also think that the point made is that we are also unique and, and the plan that we have here has to fit the needs of our community. And, and that's why I can't stress enough the, the factor that we have a higher proportion of people living in lower income, we need to find a way to ensure that the home's there for everybody.
Any other comments, questions? I want to thank you very much. This was a pretty in-depth presentation and it's a lot of food for thought. And we do have a long way to go, but if we have a document like this that we can follow, it will help. And yes, we do need to work with others. We cannot just do everything all on our own. And Carl, we'll be looking to you to guide us and I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. 9.2, I am going to be declaring a conflict of interest and Counselor McKenna will be the chair for this, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you have before you a report, I thought Counselor Gross was just going to pass the chair over to me rather than declare a conflict, but anyways. I'll let her make her own decisions. So we have before us a, a report from our integrity commissioner, Mr. Tony Fleming. And it, it lays out his report on a complaint that he received regarding a breach of confidentiality coming out of a in-camera meeting that council held last year. We have, our first job tonight is to discuss the passing of a resolution to formally receive the integrity commissioner report. And that's, we'd come up at the next council meeting, I assume. And if we could just get that formally out of the way, I'll just look to my colleagues to say, are we in favor of receiving this report? And I'm assuming we, we would be, not hearing any objections. So that piece will certainly come forward. And as soon as we've done that, once we've received that report and approved it, it will go on our town's website for a period of five years, which is legislated in the, in the legislation. Before I get to discussing, I just want to turn to my colleagues to see if they have any questions or comments on the integrity commissioner report before we discuss any potential sanctions. Mayor Pank.
Yeah, I guess the one thing, the report is there, but I think just for, for the public, there, there are about a dozen reasons why council would go in camera. And so as, as you're most aware, we, virtually all the decisions we make, other than maybe a direction of staff on certain items, as, as specifically outlined for the Missfall Act, are done in open session. And it's incredibly important that competence be maintained and that no, no disclosure information obtained in a, in a closed session be shared with any member of the public. and that no disclosure of information obtained in a in a closed session be shared with any member of the public. So it's the breach is is obviously something that gives us real concern and leads us to where we are tonight.
Thank you. Seeing the others, I'll also just offer my reflections on this report. And I guess on the seriousness of the breach. If I were to lose my temper tonight and call Counselor McGuire a bad name, I I could be, a complaint could go in rightfully so to the integrity commissioner, and I would be in breach of the oath. And most likely, I would apologize and I would take whatever sanction I was told out. The the damage of releasing information from in camera is, for me, of of an elevated stature. Information that the mayor's referred to in number, we've probably do it. It might be the purchase or sale of land, could be a legal matter where we're discussing a lawsuit, or it could be something related to employment costs or union negotiations. And the ramifications of those breaches of that nature could not only cost the town thousands or tens of thousands of dollars unnecessarily, hundreds of thousands, ruin our reputation as a trusted partner to do business with or worse. So for me, a breach of in camera has a status of its own that is, it's behind the scenes, and the risk is so much greater for the corporation. So I just wanted to say that. And I unfortunately, we've never had to deal with this in the six years I've been here since this legislation came in. People have complained, but there was never any merit to some of those complaints, but this is the first time. So I am going to introduce the idea of sanctions and and run it by my colleagues. I think, given the egregious nature of this, I would suggest, and it is Counselor Quinn we're discussing, I would recommend that Counselor Quinn be barred from attending in-camera meetings for the next 10 in-camera meeting items, which could take us a couple of months or it could take five months, depending on how many in-camera. They don't happen every meeting. They're they're meant to be rare, and they are. So that would be my beginning point and endpoint. But I'm open if council members prefer not to have any sanctions, just receive the report and post it on the website. Or if there are other sanctions that council has in mind at this time, I would be, not I would be, as your chair, please, now is the time. Counselor Robinson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Following receipt of the integrity commissioner's report, I've been reflecting on this for a matter of days. While it's clear that a breach of confidentiality occurred, I am disappointed that the investigation concluded with a suggestion of guilt, but no clear recommendation for action. I firmly believe in accountability, and breaches of conduct should carry appropriate consequences. However, given that the report did not establish Counselor Quinn's responsibility for me beyond a reasonable doubt, I can't support imposing sanctions at this time. I would sincerely hope that all members of council prioritize confidentiality moving forward to ensure that such breaches do not occur in the future. Thank you very much.
Counselor McGuire.
Thanks, Counselor McKenna. And yet it's a challenging one because it's one that doesn't, I haven't read a lot of examples, so I don't have a great experience of of what other councils have done. But for me, if there was a public apology associated with the report, I'd be less. It would go a long way for that acknowledgement and moving forward. The idea of the 10 meetings I'm interested in. But if there wasn't, without a public apology or an acknowledgement, there's an apology. I would even be interested in maybe going a little further. But I'm also conscious of Counselor Robinson's point that there isn't a, you know, it's very likely, but it's not conclusive in the report. So I'm not as firm as I would be if it was a black and white matter.
Okay. Mayor Pankow.
Yeah, thank you. The statement that I think bears the most weight here, to me anyway, is is that the statement by the integrity commissioner that is more likely than not that Counselor Quinn was the source of the breach. And I respect my colleagues. I think without an admission or without an implication from another party, and and we know we have not had Counselor Quinn admit to this, I respect that. And the first person in the chain also denied it, but the second person in the chain did admit that they had heard it from the first person in the chain. I heard it directly from the third person in the chain. So it's, I I don't have any doubt of how this happened. I don't know why, or was simply a slight or whatever. But the bottom line, I I agree with the statement that it's more likely than not, as the integrity commissioner has has indicated. So I I believe some sanction is is required, and I will support Counselor McKenna's recommendation.
Anyone else? Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. This is not pleasant, and I've been around for, hold on, 15 years now, and I've never had this happen. And I I agonized over it for months, actually, because because that was the other individual named in the report that I didn't know. So I think that barring an apology, which would be great, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't ignore it. So the in-camera sanction would be fitting in that case. But I would hope that it wouldn't be necessary, so it's not very pleasant.
Thank you.
I'm not going to make your chair job any easier. I'm I, like Counselor Robinson and and all of us, this is a disappointing day. I struggle with the report because it's inconclusive. And so what our gut says and what we think is true, it it's not being stated in this report as black and white. And so we didn't get clear direction from our integrity commissioner on sanctions. And so for that reason, I'm not in favor of sanctions at this time.
Well, my brief summary of this is two councils have suggested no sanctions for the reason Counselor Miller and Robinson pointed out. Two would appreciate an apology. I think we all would. And there's two of us that are suggesting an in-camera meeting barring. And one would be open to that. I guess, depending on how things go, I don't know what else to say. My thought was if Counselor Quinn had just turned the chair over to me, she could have stayed, and I would have invited her to make any comment she wished or or not say anything. She has chosen to be declared as a conflict of interest and has left the room. Other councils, when this has come up, the person is invited to say something. And we could certainly invite Counselor Quinn back into the room and ask her that I could give her a summary of what we talked about. Look to the clerk to make sure I'm not breaching anything and just to see if she wanted to make any comment publicly on the report or not, without asking her to apologize or to just give her direction anyway, just if there's anything she'd like to add to the report. And I don't know if I'm breaching anything by doing that. See you, Morris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I think, given that Counselor Quinn has declared that that's her prerogative, and it's only a decision that that she can make, my advice is inviting conversation might prejudice the discussion. So my advice would be to 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 respect her wishes, to excuse herself and and talk amongst the rest in terms of of part two of the recommendation, which is what action you want to take.
Right. Okay, no, it's good advice. Thank you. I appreciate that, and I agree with it. So we've we're 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 a little bit divided here, not surprisingly. As I said, and again, a tie would mean perhaps no action at all, no sanctions at all. And I'll just repeat one more time. Counselor McGuire.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess as I listen to the conversation, in my head, where I'm at would be if the report was a clear black and white and would support a stronger sanction, maybe a removal of in-camera for the remainder of the term, or even a financial penalty like some other councils have gone in. So for me, the the 10 meeting is a is a good compromise on that, where it's more likely than not, it's it's still a message there, but it's not as strong as if it was the clear black and white. I'd rather see something than nothing. I don't want to just receive the report, and I think it's serious enough as it's been admitted that breaking the in-camera confidentiality erodes the trust between council. And even though we can disagree with each other, when the trust is eroded, it shatters the foundations of the decision-making process because we can't, we can't go in there and have the conversations openly as we need to and as we're legislated to be able to do. So for that reason, I would I would go for the 10 if that's where the compromise is. But the but an apology for me would would go a long way in reconciling this matter. So I'd really like to see that. And if that wasn't there, then I'd I'd lean towards stronger sanctions.
Yeah, and if I understand, we have no way to encourage Counselor Quinn to apologize or not. The the advantage, there's no advantages. One of the reasons I chose one of the 10 is that Counselor Quinn remains fully, all the other duties of council that she has continue. There's no financial penalty. It's just the in-camera. It it sets a point that we cannot tolerate that sort of a breach and won't tolerate it. And there are consequences that three of us now believe are, match the level of the commissioner's report. Any, so that is the majority of us here. That's three, and the other two are five.
Well, we're six of us altogether.
Six of us. So it's three with two other different options on the table. Where does that leave us? Is that a majority of council? It's not like two options. See you, Morris.
So, Mr. Chair, perhaps if we clarified Counselor Brennan's position. It sounds like you have three supporting sanctions, two not. My my understanding, Counselor Brennan, is there there could be support on a proviso that a an apology be provided, but if perhaps if we clarified that, it might give you some.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan, do you want to step back in, please?
Yeah, I I think that apology is not, is probably not forthcoming. So I think it's, as you said, Counselor Quinn, who I've known probably all my life, can still perform her council duties, but missing a few, a few in-cameras is probably appropriate. However, the other side of it is, of course, the mere publishing of the report is also, in my view, if it was me, I would find it very damning. But I'll with the with the mayor and you and Counselor McGuire.
The the committee is recommending that the, we will receive this report formally at the next council meeting. Majority of council committee would like to see Counselor Quinn barred from 10 of the next in-camera meetings, however long that takes. And that I think that's about all we've been asked to do, and it will be posted on the town's website for the next five years. Thank you very much. Start tonight?
Counselor. I think so.
I just will tell you, Counselor Quinn, council made or committee made a decision. It'll come forward at the next council meeting. It will be in the minutes for your, you can read it. So I'm turning the chair back over to you.
Thank you very much for giving that. Thank you. And I do have to say I got cooled off a little bit. Okay, let's move forward. 9.3, their draft budget report with Director Dalby, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counsel. Well, we're on our third draft, and I was going to wear some new shoes, but unfortunately, they weren't in the budget. So from the second draft, January 27th, committed the whole directed staff to find additional savings. December 9th, of course, just a review for the public. December 9th started at a 9.6% levy increase that was decreased by 2.6% on January 27th, come back with 7%, and council directed staff to come back with something more in line with a with a 5% levy increase. So staff set to work looking for for these expenses through identifying some one-time expenses to be able to fund from the tax liberalization reserve, look for further operational savings. In the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of maybe exhausting some revenues, but we went and searched anyway and identify any any other potential costs that might come forward. Next slide, please. So we're just going to go through them in that order. There were a couple of one-time expenses that we identified, the first being $25,000 for consulting fees for compost site monitoring and testing, and some economic development expenses that were related to legal and consulting fees for Walker Road, Center Street, and the former water treatment plant. These are fees that are not anticipated to reoccur in 2026. Therefore, it's not an increase of the overall expenses. So therefore, it's these would be probably a prime candidate to be able to fund that one time from the tax liberalization reserve. Next slide, please. We did identify operational savings. One was under the direction It's, I think it had gone to another company for a number of years and through their aggressive pricing, we calculated that we're looking to save about $30,000 in our cellphone bills in '25 over '24. There was a reduction and a recalculation, please, over time to the tune of $30,000. This was a, this is the railway museum contribution. The ask had been $50,000. Council said they wanted the, that contribution to continue and we're proposing that possibly in '25 that we start at half of the ask and then go from there in future years. Economic development programming, so we saw a decrease in some of the programming activities, including business retention and expansion, investment attraction and community development programming initiatives for $15,000. And then on the 27th, the finalized library budget came forward and it was actually $8,000 less than the information we'd received from the first round. So we're able to reduce that and reflect the library's savings of $8,000 for a total in savings of $270,000. Next slide. Now, we did look at some potential increases in revenues. I'm going to go to the second one first. There was a grant, we had talked about the fact that Heritage House had gone up because there was a grant that wasn't available. There's another grant that's become available and so the application we filled out for that, that can be associated with some of the maintenance activities at Heritage House. So we're estimating at this point a potential of $20,000. The one above that probably needs a little bit more of an explanation because it's something that's quite a bit different to historical at Smith Falls, but not very different to a number of municipalities within the province. So direct and indirect costs within the building department are calculated in order to determine the cost of the building permit fees. A report comes back to council on a yearly basis, as legislated required, that identifies what those direct costs were and what the indirect costs are. In the past, Smith Falls hasn't actually charged those indirect costs. Many municipalities actually charge them for their share of usage of things like corporate insurance, hydro, water, if there's rent involved, but also some of the salaries and wages. 2023 year-end building report identified 125,000 of indirect costs and so we're proposing $120,000 to charge in 2025. Now, I had charged this in the past in my experience in a couple of municipalities, but other municipalities are also doing the same thing. Hamilton Township, the city of Branford, the town of Orangeville, Prince Edward County and Mississippi Mills are some examples of some municipalities that actually charge the building department those fees. So the 2024 opening balance in that building reserve is about $2.25 million with the year-end, '24, we're anticipating we'll be moving over to that to fund, to increase it from the building fees collected in '24. The interest, all those charges, we're looking at basically coming out of 2024, estimating it to come out at the same level. Building didn't receive as many permits in 2024 as originally estimated, so we'll actually be using the reserves. However, the fees that we've captured, as well as the anticipated interest charges kind of are pretty close to just working themselves out. So we're looking at a balance at the end of 2024 estimated of $2.25 million. And then there was one increased cost that was identified. Next slide, thank you. And that was the cost to, the third bylaw officer was taken out of the draft, first draft, and this is the cost, $50,000, the cost for retaining animal services control to provide relief to the bylaw department at $50,000. Next slide, please. So in summary, all of the one-time savings, the cost savings, the increased revenues offset the additional cost for the animal contract to come out roughly to the $400,000. That was the need in order to bring that 7% down to the 5%. Next slide, please. Additional staff looking at 13.45 FTEs in 2025. Next slide, please. And the summary of the operating budget, the main point is that highlighted yellow section, which is 5.00%. So we've managed to come up to that target and then the various departments reflect those changes. You can actually just skip through the next two slides. They're just there for the public and for council's review. Capital project, the presentation has no changes, however, staff have identified two changes within that since the time that this was written up to now. However, I emphasize with council that these are isolated within the capital budget and do not have any reflection on the 5.00% tax levy. They have no reflection on the levy, but we wanted to make sure the council saw it. If the council approves the budget, we come back with the bylaw and have the detail and there is a change, we want to make sure that council is aware of it. Next slide, please. So fire and police remain the same, no changes there. Next slide. And there are no changes in the parks capital budget. It remains static on the 27th. Next slide. Now, facilities has one change. The sixth item from the bottom is the welcome center accessibility. It's budgeted in 2025 and staff have realized that it likely won't get done in '25, so therefore it's been moved to 2026. Again, that does not change the levy increase. It only, it changes the ending or the projected ending balance of the reserves at the end of 2025. And again, it's not been taken off. It's just been moved to 2026. Next slide. No changes in library or water. Next slide. And this one is a nice piece of news under Public Works. Second from the bottom, updated pricings have lowered that budget to approximately $240,000 from $300,000. So that's a savings of $60,000. Again, does not affect the tax levy. It affects the bottom line for the capital reserve balance at the end of 2025. Next slide, please. No change to the construction project or the corporate services ask. Next slide, please. And I didn't want to belabor the whole point of this. I figured there's going to be some questions, I want to have some time to answer it, but really just kind of wanted to point out the highlights of what staff have done to be able to achieve the 5.0%. So in recap, it was a 2% decrease from the tax levy from the January 27th meeting. The anticipated increase for that one average household is $155 per year, down from the 298 that we talked about back in December 9th, and then the final tax levy increase of 5%. And just, so council is aware that's 5.00. Next slide, please. So if this budget proposal is approved, the first and second reading will come back on February 18th to the council meeting. Next slide and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Dauber and for you and for all of our staff's work on this. They really sharpened their pencil and I'm pleased with what I see. I have one question and then a comment as well. Can you just clarify your comment about the library savings, that $8,000? Did you say there was a mistake that got corrected?
No, there wasn't a mistake. The library, the original library budget came forward. There was a little bit of work that was done by the CEO. I know that she had mentioned she was going back to the library board and when the final budget was sent to me, it was $8,000 lower than what I had in my records from the original submission.
Great, thank you. And then, and then my comment, if, and I'm looking to my colleagues more so, I, we have committed so far to a $50,000 commitment to the museum and I'd really like that to stay and I'm wondering if we could take half of it from tax stabilization rather than operations. The reason being is I just want to make sure we're putting in a significant enough amount to make a difference. I know they're working on their asset management plan. We talked to them about that. I know they're looking at their sustainability with aging volunteers and staff turnover and their museum just draws thousands of visitors to Smith Falls. It's a huge economic driver. So I want to put in enough money that it means something and that they can do something with. And so if that's allowed and if council supports it, I would propose that and other than that, I support the changes.
Thank you. I'll speak to Counselor Miller's, I guess, comment first regarding the Heritage House and. Sorry, Railway Museum. Sorry, Heritage House is in mind there. Because we do commit about 250,000 a year, we're planning to in 2025 for the Heritage House and I think it's a very treasured valued asset. It's one we own. So really, when we make a commitment to staff it properly, make a commitment to like after the operational expenses, make a commitment for the capital work, it's on us because we own it. So we don't have the same responsibility to the Railway Museum, but I don't think it diminishes the value it brings to the community and as a tourism asset in their town. So I'll let staff speak to the question of whether it's appropriate to come from a tax stabilization or not. I did calculate it would add about, if we added it to the budget, it'd bring the increase up to 5.112%, roughly. It was a very, very modest change. Overall, and I'm really pleased with staff's work here and I want to go back to the first draft because when the first draft came in, we were all a little bit shell shocked, but staff, a lot of work happens to get to that first draft and staff believe that's truly what is needed in 2025 to manage the municipality as effectively as possible, to meet the needs of our community. So I don't want to at all discredit the fact that comes with the first draft, which is much higher and we've come down to almost half of that. Part of that is there's some things that have happened in the meantime, I think, which is very positive. We were able to determine there's a little bit more growth this year than we initially anticipated and a few other things which you've gone over. So it's very encouraging, very positive that way. We know from a capital standpoint, it doesn't necessarily affect a budget that much, but deferral of capital items, and we've grappled with this every single year, just means we're pushing something down the road and next year we're more expensive than this year. So I'm pleased we're doing what, over $18 million in capital work this year and that sort of keeps up the trend where we've been in recent years, where 18 or 14 or 15, some very high numbers in capital work, we recognize the need to do that. So I think what we see here is a, is a pretty fair compromise between maybe what would be ideal and what we feel is a fair balance and reflects the needs of our constituents and their ability to pay. And I guess when I look at overall, the other factor, and I'll go back to the growth remote because imagine where we would be without that growth added to our budget and how difficult of a challenge we would have here today. And overall, I think over the last number of years, I think it's 10 years, nine years, we had a 42% increase, 4.2% annual increase in revenue from growth. And if it had not been that, we would not have been able to provide a tax increase each year, which has been under the rate of inflation. So we've been fortunate. This is a year where we're maybe a little bit higher because we've had some pressures which you've not previously experienced. But we still have significant financial pressures and part of that is the result of a growing community. I mean, the 20% increase in the policing budget, which I've been fully supportive of, it does increase to what's resulted in a 6% overall increase here. So overall, it's growth which is looked after, really the rest of our budget. But challenges will not go away and we'll face more challenges again next year as we continue to work through this term. But I think, again, overall, I'm supportive of where we are today. I think what I envisioned, an outcome that was acceptable to me and I think at our tax periods, I figured five all along, so we're there now and I'd just like to hear more about whether it's appropriate. I support the Railway Museum and whether it's appropriate to take it from a tax stabilization for this year or do we look at a 5.12% increase, et cetera, to 5%. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor McGuire.
I'll start with the Railway Museum, just because that's the one discussion right now. I'm definitely supportive of keeping it as a $50,000 line item. I don't have a preference of whether it's rate stabilization or whether it's added such a small amount. But what I am concerned about, the area, the Railway Museum contribution is what guarantees or what checks and balances are going to be put in place as part of that agreement. For me, the roof is a major concern and I don't want to see us put an asphalt roof or contribute to putting an asphalt roof on there. It's going to be in the landfill in 30 years. We're going to be spending six figures on a new roof, hopefully, you know, in a 30-year time. I think that's the, it's the caliber of a building that if somebody had a designated heritage property and they were coming to the Heritage Committee for approval and they had a steel roof on it, we would be pushing for the steel roof and it's a more sustainable option and it's going to be better for the municipality and the museum long term. So like any provincial grant, when we apply to the province to get money for our projects, we need to show that we're meeting the provincial objectives, we're financially accountable, we're doing our due diligence. And I just want to see that same accountability mechanism in whatever funding agreement we have with the ARMEO and not just a handout kind of thing. So that's where my support on that is going to be contingent, but I definitely want to keep it as a placeholder. When it comes to cutting the Public Works position, I'd like more information from Director McMunn, just on what that means, what we're not going to be able to do as a result. I really want to see faster progress on the active transportation plan and I don't have a great understanding of the stuff we can do with realigning lines and streets of existing infrastructure. To me, it's a really easy low-hanging fruit way to do that and it's also a great way to slow down the traffic and get a lot of our safety objectives met. But I just don't, I just want to know what it's going to mean to cut that position for Public Works next year, what that is going to, how that's going to influence the big picture over there. And I'd also like more information on the bylaw animal control contract because I think we've outsourced this in the past and then we brought it in here, so now we're outsourcing it again. I just want to understand better what the implications are going to be for the municipality for those two.
Okay, there was a lot to unpack there and I'm going to do my best to answer your questions through the chair. Sorry, my apologies, not following protocol. As far as the contribution to the Railway Museum, it's, whether it's a small increase from 5% or whether it comes from the tax stabilization, that's really up to council. Anything that's a regular or a permanent expense that is funded from the rate stabilization reserve, that's what you start with in the hold the next year. $12,000, sorry, $25,000 is certainly not going to cripple the municipality, but that decision would really be up to councils, to which way that they would like to go. As far as the report back from the Railway Museum, it's not uncommon when municipalities support functions or committees, departments that are outside of the municipality to staff to work to get the information, to have a report come back to council. I believe that there was talk about their asset management plan and supporting their asset management plan and I guess the decision comes from there. What information do you? But I just don't, I, I just want to know what it's going to mean to cut that position for public works next year, what that is going to, how, how that's going to influence the big picture over there. And I'd also like more information on the bylaw animal control contract, because I think we've outsourced this in the past, and then we brought it in here, so now we're outsourcing it again. I just want to understand better what, what the implications are going to be for the municipality for those two.
Okay, there was a lot to unpack there, and I'm going to do my best to, to answer your questions through the chair. Sorry, my apologies, not following protocol. As far as the, the contribution to the Railway Museum, it's, whether it's a small increase from 5% or whether it comes from the, the tax stabilization, that's really up to council. Anything that's a regular or a permanent expense that is funded from the rate stabilization reserve, that's what you start with in the whole, the next year. $12,000, sorry, $25,000, it's certainly not going to cripple the municipality, but that can, that decision would, would really be up to, to councils, to which way that they would like to go. As far as the report back from the Railway Museum, it's not uncommon when municipalities support functions or committees, departments, that are outside of the municipality to staff to work to get the information, to have a report come back to council. I, I believe that there was talk about their asset management plan and supporting their asset management plan, and I guess the decision comes from there. What, what information do we require from the Railway Museum? I'm sure they'd be happy to share their information and share their plans for, for asset management going forward. I would ask the CIO to jump in at any point in this, because I'm, I'm taking, I don't have the experience with the Railway Museum in Smiths Falls, so if there's anything else to add to that, I would defer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I think the, the request was broad enough that we don't really understand what it's going to be spent on, so it's very difficult to determine whether it should be drawn from a reserve. So, so we didn't, we chose not to in this draft, because we simply don't know the nature of the expense. But I would remind you that it came with a request for $50,000 for five years, so that is a recurring expense, which we would not recommend you fund from a reserve. The ones that we're proposing to fund are one-time expenses. And based on the, the presentation we had from the Railway Museum, it doesn't, it looks like it's an ongoing expense. So my advice is, it doesn't fit the criteria of funding it from a reserve.
Thank you, through the chair. For the animal control versus the bylaw, the information was to pull, pull back that position and to look at outsourcing some of those services, so the animal control contract hasn't been finalized. The information that we have received points towards $50,000 is a good placeholder for that service. The, the officer was pulled back with the salaries and the benefits was in around the $74,000 mark, so this would be $24,000 less to go with the contract than with another position.
Just operationally, what does that mean? What's that going to mean for residents versus, you know, having the officer versus having the, the service?
I would, oh, sorry, I'll defer.
Yeah, so, a good question. And so, you're right, we used to contract the entirety of bylaw enforcement, and we felt that there was enough work to bring that, to, to bring the entirety of it in-house. But I think through a very difficult budget process, we were forced to get a little more granular. And, and you'll remember my, my advice a couple meetings ago, and I said, we don't necessarily have to hire people to get work done, we can, we can, we can outsource certain elements of it. This one seemed an appropriate one to look at. So given the short amount of time that's passed, we don't have a proposal yet, we're expecting one, we think it's going to come in around $50,000. But, but we would certainly come back to council if, if, if the proposal doesn't meet the standard that we have set for animal control in the town of Smiths Falls, or if the price isn't consistent with what we think it's going to be. We would probably come back and pivot and look at another option. One of those options would be to hire the position, but, but I think we got clear advice from council that you wanted reductions. This is our strategy to reduce in at least one area. We, we think, based on what we know, the $50,000 will cover it, but it has to meet our criteria for service levels, for sure. So will it morph into a full-time position in, in the future? I would predict it probably will, if past trends indicate, or any indication, we're going to have more work. But, but we feel at this point that hiving off the animal control will enable our two bylaw enforcement officers to keep up with the level of service that we've come to expect for bylaw, for all the other things we do in bylaw.
Councilor Robinson, for the entry.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, you did answer one of the questions, which was, what would the dollar amount have been for a full-time bylaw enforcement? I know in the past, from personal experience, when it was contracted out, we had an occasion to phone about a stray dog in our area that was quite aggressive, and we were told by them that they weren't in Smiths Falls, that they, they'd be there the next day. That didn't help me at all. So if, if they're not willing to come when they're called, I want nothing to do with them. Like, that's, that's pretty mild. Well, everything I've got to say about bylaw. The other thing was, how will the 2% reduction, if at all, affect us in the upcoming budget cycle? Are we just kicking money down the road and, and having to pick it up next year?
Through, through the chair, it's, at this point, I don't believe, excuse me, sorry, that there have been any service, service reductions, other than the fact that we have put off some of the economic development work, some of the programming work. Outside of that, I don't believe that we've identified any reductions in services. We've found some operational savings. The cell phones, sorry, I'm just, if you don't mind, I'm just going to kind of go through it. A hundred, yeah, the public work staff, that's going to come up down the road. The new hires, yeah, that's going to come up down the road, because in 2026, we're going to, we're going to have to budget for a full, a full cycle for them. So that will come down the road, but it's, it's, that's inevitable. The cell phones, that'll be permanent. That contract is, is permanent for the next several years, and I've emailed Rogers to find out if they're going to be inflated in the next, in 2025 from what they were in '24. The information I got back was known, but there, there will be a, there will be a CPI increase in '26, but for '25, they're good numbers. The overtime for the police, it's hard to say. The contribution, depending on how we're doing it, if it comes on as a small increase on the, on the levy, there's no, it's not kicking anything down the road. If we do it through the tax stabilization, of course, that'll reverse, so we'll have to make up $25,000 in '26. The economic developing program, that'll come back. Updated library budget, no. That was, that was a, just a nice circumstance that happened. The building indirect costs, as long as we have money in the reserves, then that could be a, a revenue source going forward. And then, and then grants for the Heritage House, they come and go. We are looking at funding some maintenance activities for it, so therefore, if we were unsuccessful in '26, then that expense would come back. So all of that isn't to just throw a whole bunch of information and confuse council, it's to say it, it, it's hard to predict. Some of those costs, we can identify, they will come back. Some of those costs, we can identify that, no, it's not kicking it down the road. And, and then some of them, it, it really depends on the circumstances going forward.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just want one last comment. I would be willing to agree with Mayor Panko and Councilman Miller regarding the Railway Museum. And I do agree with the CIO that it's not a tax stabilization fund thing, we're just kicking it down the road. So I'd be willing to go to 1.5, you know, 5.1% to accommodate that, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. See you. One more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to dig perhaps a little deeper into the, the building department indirect costs. So there is a, I would say, a mild vulnerability in the future with this one. Again, as the treasurer pointed out, it's not uncommon to do this. So by statute, we need to zero out the budget for building services. It has to pay for itself. So historically, we've done the direct costs, have been funded from the reserve. What we're proposing is to fund the indirect cost. And that works marvelously well when you have $2.1 million in your reserve. The risk is that someday, if that reserve is depleted, then, then we may have to, we may have to relook at this strategy for funding it. But today, I think it's appropriate, we've, we've offered it because we think it's appropriate. But I just want to point out that someday it may not work if we don't have monies in the reserve to cover it. So right now, I mean, we went through a building boom, and we, we, we built up the reserve, as many municipalities did. We're seeing less development now, so the contributions to that reserve is falling. We can't predict what the future of development will look like. If the Galopo Center takes off, you don't, we don't have a problem. But I just wanted to point out that there is, there is a slight risk in doing that. This council won't see it, the next one may not see it, the one after that might see it. But I think it's worth both council and the public understanding the strategy. It's very legitimate, it's something we can do within the municipal act, others do it, and the time we felt was right to do it in Smiths Falls.
Thank you. Councilor Brennan.
Thank you. And I, just to comment on, on CIO Morris's comment there, I have faith in this town, and, and I have all the confidence in the world that two or three terms, we're going to be going great guns at the same time, so small risk, okay, but I've got faith in, in the community. And I wanted to start by just saying to staff, thank you. You know, it's, it's pretty easy for us to sit around the table, and, and we get a, a 9.6% increase, but before, we're like, no, no, that's not good enough. Then seven, no, that's not good enough. So you've come up with, with, I think, a good balance, and I, I'm happy, if I look at our neighbors, given, given the, given the challenges with the police budget this year, I think this is quite amazing, actually. And it's quite amazing, because we're doing $18 million in capital work. So it's terrific. I would, and I would just say that 155 bucks for the average household, as I said, I think last meeting, that's on an average household assessed at 169 or something. And we all know that the assessments are from 2016, so whenever they do decide to impact, to update that from nine years ago or whatever, we'll have to have a hard look at that. But it's still, I think, given our neighbors, given, given, and the service that we're, we're providing, I fully support that. And I'll just weigh in on the two things that we're talking about. Us, the bylaw officers, I was a little concerned about, and, you know, hate to weigh in on operational, because I, I trust staff to deliver services and ask exactly what they need. So, you know, if, if the hire of the animal control bylaw officer is going to work, then we'll go with that, and that's, if that's what you're recommending. But I agree with Councilor Robinson. If, if it doesn't work, then it's stopping, it, it won't fly. And the other, the other item that we talked, or you were talking about, is the Railway Museum. I support fulfilling that commitment, and, and, and not through rate stabilization, you know, it'd have to come off the tax bill. And it's, you know, it's a small, and I do agree with Councilman McGuire that, you know, at some point, there'll have to be some strings attached to that. But they are, they are fantastic draw for our community, and they do great work, so support the budget.
Councilor McKenn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with the Railway Museum, and I too would, just as Council Brennan did, support it, being part of the, funded from the tax levy at the $50,000, with conditions that Councilman McGuire pointed out, to be negotiated. So that's that. But I, I want to be frank, this is, what we're passing, if we pass it tonight, this 5% point, is a police budget. This is not, there's no increases to our operational side on the tax levies, on the, on the increase of this 5%, it's not coming out of the 5%. It's 100% police, policing. So if we didn't have that rate of increase, if we just had a normal year in the policing budget, we'd be looking at a much lower tax increase. And our operational side that gave up so much would be moving forward with their, we would still have a reasonable budget. So I know that council's not interested in addressing that today, but I want the public to be aware of it, because I think that's not going away. A 20% increase is added to next year, and we'll be carrying this forward through, for years to come. I do appreciate the staff, and the compromises made across the board to get, to get this budget, and I'm ready to pass it at the 5-point, something, whatever that, 25,000.
5.12. 5.2. Yeah.
Yep. So I, I think it's, it's more than fair, and I wish everyone well in implementing it or approving it at the next council meeting.
Any other comments? Councilman McGuire.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was just looking for more information on that public works position, what taking that out means, service delivery.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McGuire, and through the chair. I certainly appreciate the, the question. So there are a number of annual programs that we run within the Public Works Department. And if we think back to prior to me adding the two additional staff for capital works, we had one staff member, Vanessa Bernanke, who's our environmental engineering technologist. Vanessa, historically, has been spread very, very, very thin, working on multiple contracts at, at any one given time, particularly through the, through the construction, through the season, spring, summer, and fall. And when we hired the two additional staff to look after capital, it was just that, they're primarily focused on capital. So although I've increased staffing capacity, I haven't really increased staffing capacity, because that work would have been otherwise done by consultants, okay? So with all of these annual programs, and I'll list a few, notably, one of the big ones is our ACPM contract. Council's affording about $1 million worth of asphalt resurfacing and, and concrete works around town during the 2025 construction season. So there's the asphalt concrete paving milling contract, the ACPM contract, lime painting contract, the annual contract, sign reflectivity, which we hire a contractor to come in to do that, but we still have to administer the contract. Biannual, or biennial OSIM inspections, this year, what we're due for inspections of our bridges in town. We don't physically do the inspections, but again, we need to administer that contract. One thing that is very, very laborsome is our traffic counts that we do throughout town with our counters that you'll see throughout our residential areas with those black tubes going across the road. They're actually there for a reason, they're counting traffic as they go across the tubes. We also have the intersection counter as well, that's being deployed right now to inform on, or, sorry, to provide information to our transportation consultants that are working on the OP through, the official plan through DILLON. Also, there's a tremendous amount of work there. And when we collect that data and informs on what we call AADT, so our annual average daily traffic count, so that's where, you know, as, as a municipality evolves and grows, perhaps if we hit a certain threshold on a road that's going to now determine that it receives a, a higher level of service, particularly with winter control operations, that AADT will inform on, on that. So it's important that we update that information every year. We can't do every street every year, but we have a program where we can deploy that equipment to garner that information. Another thing that we've talked about around the horseshoe is developing traffic warrants throughout town. We know within the department, and council certainly gets emails from, from their constituents throughout town for things like four-way stops or three-way stops, implementation of speed bumps and/or humps, community safety zones, reduced speeds. So I wouldn't say we're inundated with those requests, but we certainly get a number of them where we have to respond and act on and go out and gather data within the field. So that takes a tremendous amount of time. We know in, in the, the capital program this year, there's a number of PXOs, pedestrian crossovers, that we're implementing throughout town. So again, we need to administer those contracts. Traffic controller replacement is another contract we, we administer. Another one that's notable that we've talked about is the roads need, road, roads need study throughout town to inform on, like, our asset management plan and determine a playbook going forward in which, in terms of which streets we're going to rehabilitate and when we're going to rehabilitate them. So we're spending that ACPM money wisely every year. Sidewalk condition assessments are, and the list goes on and on from there, there's, there's quite a number of them. It's, it's difficult to, to say the least in, in trying to administer all that work throughout the summer. So that's why I'm looking to, to build on, on the department with that additional staff person. Originally, at ASTRA II, the second one being the locate permit tech, is something that it, as, as, as Director Dauber had mentioned, it's a, it's a deferral, so hopefully in 2026, we can have a conversation about adding that staff person. Right now, our, our utility operators perform our locates for us, aren't, locates being, locating and marking out underground infrastructure, sewer, water, storm. and marking out underground infrastructure, sewer, water, storm, and electrical from our streetlights and our traffic signals. So again, that takes a tremendous amount of time to see quite a number of locates come in on a daily basis, and it's taking up time from our operation side on distribution and collection. So in adding that staff person, that would be removing that responsibility from our utility staff to go out and have to do that work, then they could focus on the things that are important, like distribution and collection. So with that, hopefully, that gives you a bit of an idea and framework what I'm looking at.
Okay, so the FTE being added is for the contract administration, keeping on top of all that stuff. The one that's being removed is the utility locate.
That's right.
And we don't foresee a huge problem to our utilities department to keep doing that for another year. Is that fair?
No. Like I said, we can manage without it, but at times with, you know, let's face it, I mean, everybody's been sick this past winter, when illness kind of hits the department, and with vacation and whatnot, it does become difficult at times to focus on distribution and collection, to give it the focus that it requires when we're constantly pulled off to go and do utility locates. But nonetheless, I've talked to Andrew Eichnautner, our manager in utilities, and we can make do this year, but we're starting to get, spread a little thin on that side of things.
Are we meeting the service delivery standard for that?
We are, yes. Yep.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Well, I'm going to chime in here. You have done a fantastic job. I'm not sure how many hours you put in, but you certainly have put in hours getting this to where you've had. I definitely am supporting the Railway Museum, giving the $50,000. I do know, because I sit on that board, that the roof, the last bill that we got for the roof, was $250,000. I do have to agree with Councilor Maguire. I believe it should be a steel roof, I do, something that's going to last. Maybe it costs more, but in the long run, you're going to save. So I do agree that we need to support them, for sure. And I also agree with Councilor Robinson about animal control, because I know for a fact that when we did have previous companies doing that particular job, it was not done very well. And there were times that, no, we're not there, no, we can't be there for a couple of days, or, you know, someone else can take care of this right now, or just call laws, they're in the highway. So I think this is something we're going to have to really, really watch. And we may end up having to put that third bylaw officer on. I know bylaw has a heavy, heavy workload, and I know they're having a hard time getting to it, so I think we need to really keep an eye on that. But if we do have to put the tax up a little bit in order to support the Railway Museum, I'm in favor of that. And again, thank you. Thank you for all the work you have done. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, support around the table?
Yes. Would council indulge me with one last statement? I just want to confirm, so when we come back on the 18th, it'll be a 5.11 to 5.12 increase, okay? Just wanted to make sure that I had that. To echo what Mayor Panko said, that staff brought forward the needs, and I think that it's important for council to understand the needs of the municipality and make sure that we have plans going forward, hopefully in the future, in order to avoid that large increase in the first position or in the first time through. That certainly was not meant to rattle council or any of the public, but as Mayor Panko said, we didn't want to bring that need forward. As we develop long-term planning, as we develop the asset management plan, as we unpack our capacity needs or shortfall from systems and processes versus staffing, as we move forward and develop different need studies, roads, the roads work assessments, and come up with those plans, then at that point, we can maybe during the year, talk about the needs in a realistic way, and what's needed to come up with a plan, and maybe in future budgets, avoid that large sticker shock that would come through. And to Councilor Quinn's comments, a lot of hours have been put in, a lot of hard work has been done. This staff has put in an awful lot of work in order to trim down the budgets. I've been in the municipal world for a little while, and I would say that, and I'm sure that council would agree with me on this, that the senior staff here is very dedicated and very passionate. And that's the senior staff, and that also includes the CAO, who actually stayed with me after hours to help work on the budget, do some of the heavy lifting, and get his hands dirty, which I haven't seen a CAO over the past due to the degree that the CAO has done. So I wanted to thank all of staff for all of the hard work to contribute, and council for understanding, and being okay with the sticker shock and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there happens to be a provincial election on. We're going to do all this hard work, talk to your candidates about approving infrastructure funding for municipalities for all parties. That's the other thing, that if that happened, we wouldn't be talking about 9% sticker shock. So it's a good time for our residents to ask all the candidates, help us out.
Good point, Councilor McKinnon. Thank you, everyone. So now we move to in-plan closed session, 10.1, that council, the corporations, Town Smith Falls, and the project, 239, the 201, as amended, move into a closed meeting at 6:58 to review camera minutes for adoption. All in favor?
Want the motion?
Pardon?
Do you want someone to move that?
Yes, please.
Do that.
Thank you, and all in favor. We will move in camera, hopefully, yeah. It won't be too long. Thank you, everyone. Moving back into the meeting, we had two in-camera issues that we dealt with. One was the approval of in-camera minutes for the previous year. The other is recommendation for committee appointment that will come forward at the next council meeting. Now we'll move forward, we have no committee, board, external organization updates, information listings, correspondence, and notice of motions. So I need an adjournment that the committee adjourns proceedings at 7:06 PM and stands still adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.